I'd like to call this meeting in the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney? Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Mr. Carlson?
I pray. God in heaven, we live in troubling times. We know that there are more questions than answers, more problems than solutions. Father, we live in a time of really unprecedented uncertainty. Father God, even nationally, as we are moving toward nominating two very flawed individuals, and as neither party seems to have the answers for the problems that we have. Father God, we see that in our state as well, these months without a budget and so many recriminations and accusations back and forth. And it seems like the smartest among us is not able to take care of even the basic problems that we face. Father, we live in difficult times, but we thank you that you are the rock of ages, and that though many people have rocks that they cling to, their rock is not like our rock. Scripture says, "Our rock does not move, cannot be brought down." You are the great rock of ages, and I would ask tonight that you would help us at the local level as well to seek you, to seek the wisdom that comes from above, that is pure and peaceable and right. Father God, may we not give in to the lower denominations, denominators of men. I pray, Father God, you'd help us as well to recognize that all authority comes from you, that's clearly given to us in Scripture. So, Father God, may we be respectful as we disagree with one another and with the authority. May we appeal to authority, may we never rebel. Revolution is not a Christian concept. And Father, I know that there are things that divide us, and I know that we hurt, I know that we're scared, but I would ask, Father God, for my city, for my state, for my country, and yes, for my world, that you would help us to find peace in the Prince of Peace, hope in the Hope-Giver, life in He who is the way, the truth, and the life. And I would ask, Father God, in a very basic way, as it comes right down to the way we comport ourselves with one another, even tonight, even this week, even here in Zion City, I would ask, Father God, that you would be first and foremost, not just present, not just prominent, but preeminent in our lives. I pray, Father God, that you'd help us to move forward, to be an example, a shining light, a city on a hill. And, Father, people would see our good works and glorify our Father who is in heaven. Father God, I thank you for our mayor and for our commissioners, we thank you, Father, for our police and fire chief and all those who work, all those around here, they represent departments and groups of people who are doing their best. I pray, Father God, you'd help us to pray for them, not just tonight, but every day. And with them and with you especially, Father, may we not doubt in the dark the things that we have learned in the light, because there have been better times and there will be better times again. I pray, Father God, you keep us faithful to you, following in the principles you've given to us in your word, men and women of character. Oh, Father God, I pray that with all my heart, for all these that I love, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item four on the agenda, are agenda changes? Are there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove items 10A and B from the agenda.
Is there a motion to remove items 10A and 10B from the agenda?
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number five is a special presentation. Before we get into that, I would like to introduce a couple of people here who are represented, representing the Zion Park District. It's because of the absolutely outstanding training that the Park District provided. That's the reason that we're reading this next resolution, and I just want to congratulate them. I'd like to introduce the president of the board, Mr. Bill Hartman. And I'd like to introduce Commissioner Jesse Pye. And I'd also like to introduce Director Marilyn Krieger, and say thank you to all three of you for putting together such a wonderful training program for all of the employees over there. Thank you. Special presentation I'm going to read. This is the City of Zion Resolution of Commendation six dash R dash four. Let it be known that on February 22nd, 2016, at 11:15 a.m., Joseph Pillman was at the Zion Park District for an aerobic class when he suddenly collapsed. Recognizing that Mr. Pillman was unconscious, Frances B. Willis, a bystander, assessed Mr. Pillman's condition and found him to be pulseless and not breathing, and then realized that this man's life was in peril. She courageously and without reservation reacted quickly and started CPR. And let it further be known that Zion Park District employees Terry Staples and Judy Edwards were on the scene and assessed the facility's AED Automatic External Defibrillators, which was applied and advised to shock. Following the shock, Mr. Pillman regained a pulse and ultimately regained consciousness. And let it also be known that those on the scene exercised good judgment and took immediate action and called the Zion Fire Rescue Department, who were advised that a male was down, pulseless, and not breathing at the Zion Park District. While en route, the rescue crews were advised that CPR was in progress, and upon arriving at the scene, they found Mr. Pillman to be alert and oriented. Finally, let it be known that it is the opinion of the responding ambulance crew that the initial, immediate assessment, subsequent expeditious action, and the knowledge of all and skill and lifesaving practices exhibited by those at the scene who are greatly responsible for saving the life of Joseph Pillman. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Zion, on behalf of all the citizens, commend you, Frances B. Willis, Terry Staples, and Judy Edwards, for your contribution to the timely and heroic acts that proved to save the life of Joseph Pillman. Your humanitarian response to the needs of your fellow man is good cause for the pride bestowed upon you by all those present at the scene, the Zion Park District, your family and friends, this City Council, and the citizens of the City of Zion. Dated this fifth day of April, 2016, Albert W. Hill, Mayor. Could you guys come forward and receive your resolution?
I think this guy should get a candy bar or something.
Raise your words up. See your words. Hold your commendations up. Perfect. Right there, they're perfect. Big smile. One more. Thank you.
The fire department's got something too, so hold on.
Just want to say a few things about what they did. So, the Heart Association does research on cardiac emergencies constantly, and they found that 70% of Americans don't want to get involved when someone has a heart attack simply because they don't know how to do CPR and don't want to try and do CPR. Part of the Heart Association's goal is to increase awareness, the early recognition, early CPR, and early defibrillation through the use of AEDs that you see in city halls, public buildings throughout the country. Getting people to learn CPR is just the matter of taking a class. It takes about an hour and a half, you can do it online now. You know, a simple CPR class, probably doing CPR is going to double or triple the chances of recovery from someone in cardiac arrest. The quick, helpless actions of Terry, Frances, and Judy, or Mr. Pillman went down, is why he's standing here with us tonight. They could have simply called 911 and waited for us to get there. Within four to six minutes, brain death starts to occur if you don't get oxygen to the brain. From the time we received the call to the time we got there was just over four minutes. And when we got there, even though he doesn't remember, Mr. Pillman was alert and talking to the crews on scene. So, for that, I would like to recognize Terry, Frances, and Judy for certificates of recognition. Basically says, certificate of recognition presented to Frances B. Willis, the chief and member of the Zion Fire Rescue Department, hereby recognizing you for your outstanding actions on February 22nd, 2016, which resulted in the resuscitation of a cardiac arrest victim. Recommend you for your knowledge, your use of ELS skills, and your ability to quickly respond and help others when faced with a critical situation. Awarded this fifth day of April, 2016, signed by myself and Commissioner McDowell. That up as you're coming, would you like to say anything?
Thanks a lot. Everybody tell you that I had a heart attack when I was in the emergency room. I was breathing normally and color was good and it was all good.
Fantastic. So, you do that?
Yep.
Don't kid.
Just don't do it yet.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution of Commendation sixteen R dash four?
So, vote.
You have a motion?
Let's take it.
And a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a Resolution of Commendation. This is 30 years of service for Police Chief Steve Dumian. And the resolution is sixteen R three, and it reads, "Whereas Stephen J. Dumian has completed 30 years of dedicated and loyal service to the City of Zion, and whereas said Stephen J. Dumian has not only won great admiration for his service to the police department from city officials and fellow employees, but from Zion residents whom he serves willingly and enthusiastically, and whereas it is the desire of the City Council, on behalf of the citizens of this community, to express sincere and profound appreciation to Stephen J. Dumian, forgiving generously of his time and effort. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Zion extends to Stephen J. Dumian its humble expression of esteem for serving faithfully and well, and extends its best wishes for continued employment, good health, success, and prosperity for many years to come. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the council and a suitable copy presented to him. Dated at Zion, Illinois, this fifth day of April, 2016, Zion Mayor Albert W. Hill, Lloyd E. Deteen, Mike McDowell, Billy McKinney, and Richard Fryerson." Chief?
We gotta do this better than that.
Just in case. Last one. Thanks, guys.
I just want to say it's actually been a real pleasure serving the community for the last 30 years. I've enjoyed it, I've had a very great career working for this. I feel this is like a small accomplishment after the last 30 years, but I think that's a great accomplishment. I feel kind of humbled following that, so appreciate that.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So, vote.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
On the list is Mr. Clyde Macklemore from Zion, Illinois.
Last time I was here, I was denied the proper address, the mayor, on the issue. So, this is not directed to the mayor, this is directed to you two, really you three. Not you, Rick, you wasn't here yet. Any issues, you know, the mayor hit his hammer, I walked in at 6:58, and the list was up. The mayor hit his hammer and called a meeting to order. Any issues a citizen have, he has to wait two weeks in order to bring it to this council meeting. The Illinois Open Meetings Act states that any person should be permitted the opportunity to address public officials. It's only a three minutes, and you have to sign the list, Zion City Council, that's y'all's city ordinance. My beef is not, my beef is with you council members, because y'all sat there and didn't say one word. Y'all allowed the mayor to be Hitler, and he ruled. Not one of y'all said nothing, Mike McDowell, Lloyd Deteen, or Billy McKinney. Y'all are public officials who work for the citizens. Each one of you was voted in and can be voted out. Even if you don't want to hear what I got to say, each one of you allowed my constitutional rights, a freedom of speech, to be taken away from me. I know what the mayor said after I left, he would allow me to speak at the end. I said in many of these council meetings and seen residents speak who wasn't on that list. Then the rule is to sign the sheet, and it's taken up to 7 o'clock, not 6:58. The city council meets, it's the hell of business for the city. Well, we have to sit, we have to sit there, and for y'all to be scared to open your mouth, then I see any of you change, I don't see nothing changed in this city hall but the name on the door, same old, good old boy BS. I still haven't addressed the issue. I gotta wait two more weeks to come back, because I only got three minutes to address the issue. Chief, congratulations on your 30 years. Me and you done had our beefs, you know? But one thing I can say, you've always been a man, your door's always been open to me. And I want to congratulate you on that. I know we ain't got the best agreement with each other, but you always been my guy, I always been able to call you. You might call me back two days later, but you, you know, that's all I got. Al Hitler. Al.
Thank you, Mr. Macklemore. Item number seven on the agenda is the consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on March 15th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m., and a special meeting held on March 23rd, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. Bills, vouchers 123093 through 123255, drawn on First Merit Bank, total $1,254,196.10.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, vote.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item eight is considered passing resolutions as follows. Eight A is adopting the annual 1,000-hour standard for IMRF participation by elected officials for Mayor Hill. We had talked about this a few months back, about raising the hours that a person has to work before they become members of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, from 600 to 1,000 hours, and we approved it, I believe, two months ago. And this is the resolution that's needed by the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund to raise the participation level to 1,000 hours. Is there a motion?
We accept this resolution of raising the hours to 1,000 for participation in IMRF.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item nine is consider passing ordinances as follows. Nine A is amending various Zion Municipal Code sections regarding fees, second reading for Mayor Hill. We have looked at this a couple of times, and it's been postponed a couple of times, and I will open it up for the council's discussion. I think it probably would be a good idea to have discussion prior to having a motion on this one. It's your pleasure.
Well, I do have something to say about it. You know, we have, we have a budget before us, we just had a budget meeting just prior to this meeting, and we have made some significant cuts in our budget, I think, a total of about 1.5 million, David, is that around that figure? And I've had a hard time looking at the fee increases. And I would like to, I'd like the commissioners to consider, not a blanket fee increase, but an increase along these lines, that the current fees that we have, we increase by We retain the proposed fee increases for all fines, penalties, anything that has to do with some kind of a penalty or a fine, so that those can be, remain the same. And the rest, we increase by 10%.
Do you know off the end what the impact will be on the proposed budget?
You know, I asked David to do some calculations for me. I also asked him to calculate the removal of anything new, and I'm removing that request so that any new fees, we will add to it. So, I'm not sure exactly what that calculation would be. With the removal of new fees, it would have been 110,918. But if we add in the new fees, it would be probably about, what, half of that, you think, David? About 50,000?
I'm just adding up here real quick.
Did you have a copy of that? Did you have an extra copy of that? Yeah.
If you're looking at about 52,000 if they were, if any new fees were instated as presented
That's not a motion, that's, I'm just asking, you know, dialogue with the council to, you know, respond to that.
What does that include, Mike?
What's that?
Tell me what's included in the new fees.
Okay, so, we would, anything that is a fine or penalty, we keep as recommended by Mayor Hill, and then increase the fees by, well, I think I said, $5 or 10%, whatever Oh, I'm sorry, I also said, keep the ambulance fee as suggested.
If, what you have, the effect is about 111,000 dollars without instating new fees under what you said. It'd be about 60,000 dollars reduction if we implemented new fees as presented in the ordinance and only increased the other fees by either the $5 or the 10%. So, that would, that would reduce our overall revenue by about 60,000 dollars versus what's in the budget as of now. The big portion of that being the vehicle stickers.
Yeah, the biggest increase is vehicle stickers, from 30 dollars to 50 dollars. Another big one would be the driveway installation review and inspection, but I'm suggesting we, we allow for that fee. The rest of them are based on projected collection of fees, not so significant. The big ones are the driveway and the city stickers. Which means we'd have to cut an additional 60,000 out of our budget, or something like that.
Correct.
Yeah. Like I said, that's not a motion?
Right.
That is, you know, a topic for discussion.
And I'll, I'll just give my opinion on this, and I think I've stated it before, that we are, and I don't mean to be lecturing anybody, but we have significant budget cuts that we're going through right now. I think that, and we've talked about this in our workshops, that if our, we presently collect 700,000 dollars a year in general tax revenue, property tax revenue?
Yes, 700.
For the general fund?
For the general fund.
And right now, our retirement pension programs are increasing at 200,000 dollars a year, and we don't have enough money to cover them, so that if, if next year's pension increases by 200,000 dollars, our general fund revenue that we can use for all the other things in the city will be reduced to 500,000 dollars. And if we keep doing that for three more years after that, we are not going to have any general fund revenue to pay off the pensions, and that means it's going to have to come out for another fund. And I know that that doesn't sound frightening to a lot of people right now, but I think that we have to look down the road and understand that if we don't do something drastic, that we're going to have serious problems three or four years from now. And I guess it's like my mechanic, he just got an increase in his workman's comp bill, he's raising his fees, he's raising his price to me, and I understand that, and I, the only thing we can do is cut costs or increase revenue, and this is, is an attempt to increase revenue and stay a little bit ahead of the game, even though we won't be ahead of the game. I know there are some things that'll be coming online in, in the next couple of years, the hospital will be online, we will be done with a payment to pay back the pension funds that were, that didn't take place in the past. So, there's some money that we will have freed up to, to use, but I'm, I just don't like the way that this is going. And so, I'm going to vote to accept the fees that are, that are as presented by, by staff and, in the original budget process. And I know that that's not a popular thing to do. I don't like increasing fees, I don't like increasing taxes, I have to pay them, I have to pay my taxes here too, and I don't like doing it, but I, I've said since, for a while, that if we don't get our finances in shape and get to a balanced budget, and this is not a balanced budget, we're still about 300,000 dollars short of a balanced budget, there won't be a police department, or fire department, or public works department, or there won't be any departments, because we can't pay them, and we can't continue to spend money, spend more money than we take in. And so, we're trying to look at a lot of things, but And so we're trying to look at a lot of things, but they're, they're down the road and they're not guaranteed. So the fees are something I think that we can count on. So I will vote to keep the fees as presented by staff.
I just want to say that we haven't sat down together to discuss this. This is our sitting down and talking about these fees. So there's going to be a little back and forth here until we can make a decision. And that's how government works, right?
Exactly. That's, and that, that's one of the things that we've all tried to do. We're trying to have these conversations in public, so that you understand what's going through my head and what's going through the other commissioners' heads when we make these decisions, rather than having them all made before we get here and then vote on. So if we, if we look, I don't want to see, if we look unsure of ourselves when we're doing some of these things, we are unsure of ourselves right now, because we're talking about these things for the first time, which, which is what I think, and I think our, this city council believes is the way local government is supposed to be run. So that's why we're, and the other thing is that we, we all understand that we're going to disagree on some things, but it's, he's not going to throw his water bottle at you, and I'm not going to throw mine at him. We're going to be friends and we're going to continue to work together when, after we disagree, so.
Okay. We can't spend more than we take in. Yeah, I mean, it's an easy equation. We raise revenue or we cut expenses. And, I mean, our department heads have done a phenomenal job in, in cutting 1.5 million dollars out of the budget. So it, it is a little, it's hard for me to say, let's not raise fees, because I know that means we're going to have to cut even more from our budget, which I'm not sure where that's going to come from right now. Mr. Mayor, I wonder if, if we had a, a regular yearly fee increase, and some, some of these are dramatic increases. Some of these are actually new fees we haven't collected before. And I, and I guess coming into this, I, coming in and sitting down and looking at the, the sheet that David put together, that I asked him to put together, I've already decided to make a concession and allow for the new fees. I don't know how many more concessions I'm going to make tonight, because I don't really want to raise the, the fees, if we can avoid it. But if we agreed to, on a regular basis, increase these fees so that our residents are impacted drastically this year, would that be acceptable to you or our commissioners?
Well, you know, listening to the mayor and knowing this is, was going to take place, I think about the departments that have been so faithful and have done such a great job in our city. And the, knowing that the way the city is going and growing and the problems that we have, we need the services of the fire and the police and the street department and building department. We need every department. We can't go without those services. And I know just, I feel like the mayor, I have to pay, I live here and I pay taxes, and I hate to see an increase in taxes. But I really feel we have to do something to maintain our services and make this a better city to live in. Driving down the streets, you'll notice that a lot of them need repair. Well, that isn't all the city's fault, but we have people that are working constantly, trying to do something to bring extra funds in for that very thing. And so I, I would say, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Commissioner McDowell, that I hate to see any new fees attached to people, but I feel like the mayor, we have to move forward. And I, I would vote along with him in this issue.
I would, as, as the new member, I'm, I'm kind of split in between. I mean, I'm, I'm not as vested with some of the history with the city, but these fees continue to be kind of passed off little by little onto the citizens. And even with what's proposed here, it doesn't seem like we're, speaking as a citizen, we're not getting a lot of new services for that. So this is just kind of keeping the lights on. So when I'm looking at, you know, new revenue, this doesn't seem to be the way to go, because this is a burden that we put onto the citizens and then it stays there. It's not something that we put on temporarily to make up the revenue and then take back. So it still doesn't feel like it's the actual answer. I do think that, you know, some, some of the fees make sense. I mean, in, in talking with some of the department heads and how long it's been since they've been raised, it does make sense that some of them be reviewed. But even the way some of the ordinances are written, I had, you know, separate questions on, it, the building fees, for instance, it, it feels like a deterrent for people to actually improve their property. You know, we're already sitting with high tax bills and property values that are tanking. So to continue to throw cost on top of that, when I want to go and, you know, put up a fence or put in a new driveway, it, it doesn't feel right.
Is there a motion? I could make a motion. All right, well, I'll just put it out there then. I, I'd like to move that we increase the fee structures on, on this scale, that the fines and penalties that have been proposed remain, that the ambulance fees that have been proposed remain the same, that everything... Okay, I'll, I'll tell you what. This will be my motion. That everything else will remain the same, except vehicle stickers, which will increase by five dollars. So we're removing driveway installation? So the only, the only thing that is being changed are the vehicle stickers, which affect the most of our residents, I believe. How many do we sell, David? Eight thousand?
About seven thousand.
Seven, okay. So that, that, some of these other things aren't going to affect every person. So I recognize that, that if we increase the liquor license fee, that's not going to increase everybody. Or if we increase the demolitions, that's not going to affect everybody. But vehicle stickers does affect most residents here, and so I'm going to ask for, everything can remain the same, except for vehicle stickers, which will increase by five dollars. And we can increase it by another five next year and another five a year after that, if we feel it's necessary. That's my motion.
Yes, sir, I did.
So basically, it's, it's as...
I told you. When he's going over those fees, you be sure he goes slow, so I get all this.
I do have a lot of other questions about these fees, but I'm not going to go through all of them.
So your motion is as presented?
As presented, except for vehicle stickers, five, five dollar increase.
Five dollar increase.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a further discussion?
So I have a couple of questions on driveway installation, engineering reviews. And then with the rates that we're raising, the, I believe the inspection fees to, was it 200 or 100 dollars an hour in a minimum of two hours? Is that right?
Was it for driveway installation?
Um, I think it was for more than just driveway, but that was a gun.
Well, driveway installation, review and inspection, this, so everyone understands how, how that works. Currently, currently the city will, if you do a water main, or, I'm not a water main, but if you do like a water service repair or sewer repair at your house or something like, like that, you will get a permit at the building department, but you will also pay a review and inspection fee to make sure it's done properly. These are put in place to protect the homeowner. In the instance of driveway installation, review and inspection, what happens is if you're going to put a new driveway, currently, Rich, I think it's 3% of the value?
2%.
2% of the value?
Yeah.
So, I defer you in a second. So say an average driveway is, say, costs 3,000 dollars.
You're paying 60.
So you're paying 60 dollars for a permit fee and then that's it. But the service that's provided by the city would be administration of the permit, and it goes to engineering for a review, because then what happens is one of our engineering inspectors will have to visit the home in question. They go out there to make sure there's not going to be any conflicts with utilities, grading issues, anything else like that, because normally it's a new improvement. In most cases, there have been some where they're, you're replacing an old one with a new one. But it'd be like a home with an existing gravel or something else like that. So you want to make sure it's, it's going to be put in, in the fashion per the quote that's been given to the building department, because it's based on tonnage in square foot. I know there's a lot of stuff going on here, but you want, layman's terms, you want to make sure it's not going to flood the house next door or anything else like that, or it's not going to, you know, a grade issue where it does that. Probably 70% of the time, if it's in the alleyways, the shut-off box for the water has to be raised. So now the water department has to go out there, they have to raise that for the new driveway. Then the engineering inspector has to go back out again to check the subgrade, because these are all code driven by engineering standards. Make sure the gravel and everything is compacted underneath it. So that's his second visit there, besides probably the water department. And then they do the actual installation of the asphalt. They, there's a formula that you calculate, so it'll tell you how much tonnage you have to have there at a certain depth. So after they roll it, then you, we know that the homeowner's getting what they're paying for. What has happened in the past is the city, years back, did not have any, but they would do the pre-licks inspection and then the citizen was pretty much on their own as far as where the asphalt was being installed. Well, we were finding out, if nobody was present from the city, these driveways were failing, the homeowner would be back here at city hall or at the building department, and they're saying, what did I, what did you guys do for me? I pay a permit and then my driveway only has this much asphalt on it, it fell apart. And now you have a homeowner upset with the city and possible litigation between a contractor and a homeowner. And so what happens now is that we are there on until the start to finish of the installation. So you're actually, there's an inspector present as the asphalt's being applied in these driveways. Normally, they take probably four hours, sometimes they take all day longer to, to have them installed. We, the city has never charged for this in the past at all on something like this. And you're, so you're, you're kind of underwater just for that timeframe itself, because you have to pay the inspector to be there, but there's nothing coming back for it, except for the 2% that was done at the building department. And that's the reason why that fee was looked at, because it's similar to water repair and sewer repair, which already does get charged.
So thank you for that. That was a great explanation. So for, for clarity, if I'm, I'm looking at page 16, this covers new and existing driveways, and does it cover concrete as well?
Yes, it should cover, yeah, concrete as well, too.
So it'll, it'll be a new or replacement, this fee still applies, that same, all of that same work will be done?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there...
Okay, Billy's not here. If, if there's a split vote, what, what's the procedure for that? Just, I'm curious, that's all.
The, it's my understanding that if there's a split vote, the motion would not pass. And in order to bring it up again, I believe the people, a, a person who voted in favor, no, opposed to it.
Would have to come up at the very next regularly scheduled meeting.
A, a person who...
Would have to do a motion to reconsider.
Right, a person who opposed it would have to make a motion to reconsider.
And it would have to be addressed at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner, or Mayor Hill?
No.
Wait, wait a minute, maybe I misunderstood this. I might have to withdraw my, my vote. What we're saying that you, the things that we're voting on now, we're just going to change the, the city stickers.
That's it.
That's it.
And that's it. And everything else is the same?
Everything else is the same.
Okay.
We're okay then?
Okay.
Most curious. Item 9B is granting a special use permit for cell tower installation for property located at 3341 Sheridan Road, second reading for Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. T-Mobile is requesting a special use permit to erect a cell tower at the Piggly Ridley site, the south lot between the building and the Kmart parking lot there.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve ordinance, or this ordinance granting a special use permit for cell tower.
We have a motion. And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C is granting a variance from the Zion Municipal Code, section 102-404B, 3341 Sheridan Road, second reading for Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. They're requesting a height variance. It exceeds the maximum height allowed in that zoning district, which is 52 feet. They're requesting a height variance of 100 foot with a five-foot lightning rod.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept, approve what this ordinance granting, height variance, and that's for the exact same cell tower. We just approved.
Yes.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. We have deleted items 10A and 10B. Item 10C is consider filling one police lieutenant vacancy, one police sergeant vacancy, and one patrol officer vacancy, and requesting the names of the next qualified candidates from the Board of Fire and Police Commission from the eligibility list per Chief Dumia.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think you pretty much covered the whole thing, but with the recent retirement of Police Lieutenant Terry Richards, I respectfully request the City Council approve the filling of one lieutenant position from the current eligibility register of the police lieutenant candidates established by the Zion Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. In addition, I respectfully request the City Council approve the filling of one sergeant position for the, from the current eligibility register of police sergeant candidates established by the Zion Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. I also request that the City Council approve the filling of one patrol officer position from the current eligibility register of the police officer candidate established by the Zion Board of Fire and Police Commissions. Just want to make it clear that these requests are outside of our personnel reductions that we have made through attrition.
Is there a motion?
I move that we fill these positions recommended by the chief, and these changes are reflected in our budget.
That is correct.
And a motion? And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10D, request permission to accept proposal of assurance agency for the renewal of health, dental, and life insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield effective May 1, 2016, per Director Naval.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Assurance agency is our insurance brokers. They basically go off the market for us and get quotes. They provided us quotes back on our medical insurance, our dental, and as well as our life insurance. Originally, the medical insurance came back at a 7.2% increase. They went back and negotiated with Blue Cross, based on some of the results that came back from other providers, which weren't exactly the same coverage levels and things of that nature, but they used that to leverage negotiations with Blue Cross and got it down to about a 3.5% increase over the current year. Dental quotes came back, and based on the quotes that come back, I would recommend that we actually switch from Blue Cross, because they came back at a 7.5% increase, and move over to Guardian for our dental coverage, which is actually at a 3.9% decrease from what we currently have. There's a, there is a slight increase in deductible on the dental with that, but all other coverage levels are, are the same. And then the life insurance quotes, we were with National Insurance, but I, which came back at no change from our current, but we did get a quote from Standard, which they came back at a 17.5% decrease in our premiums, and they're giving that a three-year And they're giving that a three-year rate guarantee on that, and they also are providing additional line of duty accelerated death benefits that we did not have. So those would be my recommendations for renewal effective May first.
I have a question and I apologize for asking it now, but it just kind of dawned on me. The agenda item says for renewal of health, dental, and life insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we're changing from Blue Cross Blue Shield to run the dental coverage to Guardian and we're changing the life coverage to this, from National to the Standard. Does that, is that an issue on, on an agenda item versus an action item?
This is where act, well, if we don't take, when are these, if we just authorize him to move forward, we can accept the proposals at the next. When are they due?
We, we have to do this pretty much right away because we have open enrollment that has to happen and be scheduled for any changes in medical by May first.
So this is really reviewing quotes from different providers and picking a quote, picking a provider?
The consideration was renewal with Blue Cross, but based on the results, we are switching away from Blue Cross on, on the dental, staying with Blue Cross on the medical.
Well, if that's...
You're good with that? I'm, I'm just, I'm just unsure.
For renewal of health, dental, well, you could do, the life insurance would, that's not going to be with Blue Cross now, is it? That's going...
Correct. That actually is with National.
So you're only approving the blue, the health with Blue Cross tonight?
No. We're not in agreement tonight.
No, I'm just saying.
The health is the only one with Blue Cross though.
The health and dental.
No, dental, I thought you were going back.
We were currently with Blue Cross.
And you're switching.
And we were considering, right, we were considering the renewal with Blue Cross, but the results of the quotes came back better to switch.
So we're not going to do dental with Blue Cross?
Correct.
So it's only health with Blue Cross, so it's dental and life?
Right.
Can those wait till the next meeting?
Do they have to?
The, the issue is, is we have a agenda item that says we're going to renew health, dental, and life with the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we're not. We're only renewing health with Blue Cross Blue Shield and not dental and life. And whether we're going to have an issue with Open Meetings Act if we put something on the agenda, I don't know if this, I don't know how this works.
Well, we should have clarified it under agenda changes and to be one hundred percent pro, you want the safest answer, the safest answer would be that. This is inaccurate. It, is it innocuous somewhat, but the safest answer would be approve the health with Blue Cross because we're not approving all three with Blue Cross. We're not renewing. But you're considering...
But we are accepting the proposal.
We're just choosing not to double Blue Cross. Did these all come from Assurance Agency, all the quotes? Okay. So we're just missing, we're accepting the proposals from Assurance. Okay. With that clarification, we'll move forward tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion? I move that we accept a proposal from the Assurance Agency.
Thank you. To renew health with Blue Cross?
What's that?
To renew the health with Blue Cross.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And then the rest of it would be to renew our, our medical insurance with Blue Cross, our dental with Guardian, and our life insurance with Standard. As recommended by the Assurance Agency.
Thank you, Commissioner McDowell.
Have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item ten E, consider authorization to proceed with City of Zion participate in, participation in regional economic development initiative for Director Naval.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Economic Development staff has been meeting with counterparts of Wadsworth, Winter Harbor, and Beach Park to try and figure out how to attract more retail and attract development to this area. Individually, on our own, each doing our own thing, we just don't have the, the clout necessary to be able to attract a lot of good retail to the area. So the thought was, based on the Community of Character Initiative, the Chamber of Commerce cooperative efforts, to continue that and work cooperatively with the other municipalities, trying to enter into an agreement where we would consult with group Retail Strategies, who is a economic development broker, basically. They have relationships with all different retailers across the country. And we would contract with them to make these connections, to market our sites, but not just market Zion sites, but rather be able to go to a retailer and say, "We have five sites in the region that work for you. Take your pick, we want you here," and make the region more of a retail stronghold so that we don't lose them for the area just because we're trying to work on our own. Retail Strategies gave us a number, which was pretty fascinating, that within those four communities annually, there's three hundred and ninety-one million dollars a year that goes ten minutes outside of the area. Whether it be Pleasant Prairie, Gurnee, or to other municipalities, three hundred and ninety-one million dollars in retail sales is being spent out of this area. And that's a heck of a story to be able to tell retailers to try and attract to this area. So the staff all sat down and tried to brainstorm what challenges there might be. The easy part was saying of the contract with Retail Strategies that we each share proportionate cost of that contract. The harder part came in what happens to the benefit. Again, I don't care if something, you won't see me, hear me say this much, but I don't care if something goes in the Beach Park and they get the sales tax because that's going to create jobs and that's going to keep people buying local and, but obviously I'd rather have it in Zion, but we need to tear down those, those barriers. So we decided that we would also approach a possible sales tax sharing agreement as well, where if something goes in the Beach Park, then everybody benefits in the sales tax of that. If something goes in Zion, everyone benefits in the sales tax of that. So we drafted some kind of bullet points that we would, we would do where everyone would share in their cost proportionately based on the most recent census figures. There would also be an allocation of benefits of the revenue that goes with any development that comes into the area, and that would be for a ten-year period from the date of the occupancy of that building. So we might have a three-year agreement where we work cooperatively. Hopefully, it's a longer-term thing, but if something comes in at that point, at that, during that three years, all the communities will share in that revenue for a ten-year period. It takes time for a development to get up going, realize its full potential. The, the sharing would be applied to, the calculation for the sharing would be applied to the one percent sales tax. We would also, it would only apply to retailers that generate over two hundred and fifty thousand of taxable sales per calendar year. We didn't want to catch a lot of the mom and pop type places, you know, if the harbor, if a bait shop goes down in by the lake, I'm not, I don't care about the sales tax in other communities. We wanted to catch the bigger, bigger retailers. And then anything that, the benefits would be, that we would share would be after any related development costs that might be incentivized by that local municipality. So if we were going to say to get a developer in here, like we did with Walmart, a sales tax rebate agreement to get them to come here, then whatever we rebate would come off of the, the sales tax collect first, and then whatever remains is what the community shares a benefit. We also said that we would pre-identify any developments to be excluded from this, so if communities were already working with a retailer or had somebody on the line, so to speak, that, you know, we're not looking for them to share the revenue from that if they've already done a lot of the legwork and it's just in its final stages. And then there would be an opt-out period that during the three-year term, a community may opt out. However, anything that would, anything entering the community within two years after that opt-out would still be subject to the terms of this agreement. Basically, we had to kind of look at this and say, "The staff here is cooperating now, the councils here are cooperating together, but we don't want someone to say, 'Hey, we just got a, landed a giant store, they're going to be coming in a year, we're going to opt out of this so that we can keep a hundred percent of the sales tax.'" We want to discourage the lack of the cooperation or any shady dealings, so to speak. So staff put this together to present to each of our councils and boards respectively to see if there would be, we're basically requesting to start the process of drafting an intergovernmental agreement that all four municipalities would then bring to their boards for approval with these types of details in here. That's a lot of summary, but hopefully...
So for the first year, we would have to pay forty-three thousand?
Correct. Correct. And then the second year, two and three, we'd be at about twenty-one thousand, twenty-two, twenty-one, five.
And the return is just one percent of the sales tax, which is divided, or is that the sales tax that's...
The, the sales tax, we, we have a one percent sales tax. So that full amount of sales tax that comes in from that development is what would be divided out to the communities.
The state, the state collects seven percent and they return one percent to us.
Right.
And then that would be divided, if I understand this correctly, basically it'd be twenty-five or fifty percent of that would go to Zion, twenty-eight percent would go to Beach Park, thirteen percent to Winter Harbor, and seven percent to Wadsworth. And the cost of the program would also be on those same percentages.
Right. The host community would collect a hundred percent of the sales tax because they're the taxing authority within that district, but then there would be a revenue share agreement that would, that amount of revenue would be calculated based on what they collected.
And any incentives that communities like Zion would give is totally, borne totally by our community or is it shared?
So what would happen, like, let's say, let's say there was a cost of two hundred thousand, we gave them a two hundred thousand dollar incentive to come in. If they bring in five hundred thousand dollars of sales tax, two hundred comes off of that right off the top and three hundred thousand is then what would get allocated.
We recoup whatever.
We recoup, the, the host community would recoup whatever development costs they provide as an incentive right off the top. If they don't recoup it a hundred percent in the first year, then that would carry over to the second year until they recoup that cost.
Is this in the budget?
This is.
That's right. I think this is, this is a great idea. I think the concept that the staff has come up with, with the staffs from the other communities is great. And I would be, I'm certainly in favor of this. I'm just, has anybody done due diligence on the retail strategies?
We have. We've, we've met with other, we've, well, we met with them and then we've also compared with other municipalities. Actually, Antioch just signed with them. One of their, one of their principles is that they do not do work for surrounding, for surrounding communities. Like, if they, if we engage them, they're not going to work with walk-heagans because that's a conflict of interest for them trying to attract retail here and for another client.
So is there a radius on that or...
Um, I, I, I could find that out for sure, but, you know, we look, we knew they signed to Antioch and we figured that that was kind of outside of the radius that most retailers are looking at anyway. When a retailer looks at an area, they kind of draw circles, say immediate customer base, and Antioch is outside of, of a lot of that anyway. But we, we would be checking references before, you know, continuing to follow up with other communities. We met them about a year ago and did some preliminary due diligence on that at the time.
Have, have they seen the plan for Zion that we developed with our consultants? And what's their assessment of it?
That, they, they would be using that basically as a guide, but part of the, part of the increase, the big part of the first year cost is a lot of the due diligence that they do. They actually go into every community, look at all sites available, not just what the city owns, but open storefronts, things of that nature, and build an inventory. But part of that is in line with what the plan, you know, the comp plan has for where the industrial corridors are, where the retail corridors are, what we have as far as TIF districts, things of that nature, so.
So is our agreement with that, it would be for three years or...
It would be a three-year term.
Well, we're not, we're not making that decision.
No, 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 we're not, we're not looking to approve the agreement.
What, what you're looking for is a, an approval to move ahead with the concept?
With the concept.
Before we start incurring legal fees on intergovernmental, things like that.
Then there would be a contract with...
We would come back with an intergovernmental agreement and a contract for retail strategies for approval.
Does the budgeted items, does it include legal fees and things like that or is it as that?
There's some increase in legal fees in the Economic Development Department as well.
Okay. Do you need a motion to move ahead with this?
Just with the consent.
Yeah, with, yes.
A consent.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion that we, are we going to be authorizing the Economic Development Department to move ahead with this project with retail strategies? What's that?
I, I don't think...
Not move ahead, but...
Do you want to specify retail strategies or can we just say, "You guys move ahead with the concept and then come back..."
I think we move ahead with the intergovernmental agreement to start drafting that with the communities with these principles in mind, and then we'll adopt, there'll be a motion in a future or a request at a future council meeting to utilize retail strategies for this as well as actually adopting the intergovernmental agreement.
Did we talk to any other competitors?
We did.
For retail strategies?
Yeah. We, we had, I won't mention some of them, but a, a big difference with them is some of the other competitors, they just are data warehousing basically, and they gather demographics, median household incomes, things like that, and they say, "Here, here's your information." They actually have the relationships and they, they facilitate, you know, Lowe's or whoever would be a good fit here, we're going to set up a meeting with them, the city or the groups, and market the sites, say, "What do you need? What do you need from us? Why would this be a good fit for you?" So they, they go that extra step of actually brokering the relationships with the developers.
Got it. Is to move ahead with the process of investigating intergovernmental agreements and this economic development program. We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item ten F, consider approving the contract for services from Christopher Burke Engineering and request permission to advertise for bids for the two thousand sixteen road project for Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. What you have before you is a quote contract from Christopher Burke Engineering for the two thousand sixteen road project. Staff is requesting approval to execute the contract with Christopher Burke for engineering services. Roads included in this project are East Bethel Boulevard, Twenty-seventh Street to Thirtieth Street, Twenty-sixth Street, Galley to Gideon Avenue as an ultimate bid. Funding for engineering construction of this project is from the Street and Bridge Fund and will be budgeted accordingly in the upcoming fiscal year. Staff requests and recommends approving the contract for services from Christopher Burke Engineering for a price of nineteen thousand and fifty dollars and to advertise for bids upon completion of bid documents and drives.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the contract services for Christopher Burke Engineering.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item ten G, consider awarding phase one and phase two engineering services to Christopher Burke Engineering for surface transportation grant for a Lorelei Drive between Illinois Route one seventy-three and Highland Drive for Director Colangelo.
Thank you again, Your Honor. The city will be submitting an application for a surface transportation grant for a Lorelei Drive between Illinois Route one seventy-three and Highland Drive. This program distributes federal funding in the form of eighty-twenty grants for construction, engineering, and actual construction cost. The estimated amount of the grant to be awarded to the city is approximately three hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-four cents. To expedite the project and move on the schedule to be project-ready, the goal is to release the project for bidding in late two thousand sixteen or early two thousand seventeen and complete construction in the summer of two thousand seventeen. Staff is requesting awarding phase one and phase two engineering to Christopher Burke Engineering of Rosemont, Illinois in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Funding for these services will be from the Motor Fuel Tax Fund and budgeted accordingly in the upcoming fiscal year.
Is there a motion?
Move.
The motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item ten H is tabulation of bids, twenty-seven hundred block of Hebron Avenue, water main replacement for Director Colangelo.
Thank you again. What you have are the bid tabulations for the twenty-seven hundred block of Hebron Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. City was awarded eighty thousand dollars in a community development block grant with the city funding the rest of the project through the water fund. The, this is my old one. The loan bid is approximately thirty-four thousand dollars more than anticipated for the fiscal year. Staff is recommending accepting the low bid from Campanella and Sons of Wadsworth, Illinois in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and zero... Sons of Wadsworth, Illinois in the amount of $184,570.00. The $34,000 difference will then be budgeted in the water fund in the next fiscal year's budget. This will allow the city to utilize the award CDBG grant. Just so you do know, we did rebid this. We had six more bids that come in this cover sheet. This is from the last meeting that when we, we removed it, and it is the same, uh, low bid amount. You'll see that on your second page.
Is there a motion? Move. Is there a motion?
Motion, second page.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10I is tabulation of bids, 2016 annual fuel, bituminous, and construction material costs for Director Colangelo.
We have tabulated the bids for our annual fuel, bituminous, and construction material costs. We are recommending rejection of low bids for SAE 10W 30 motor oil, SAE number 15W motor oil, and hydraulic fluids, as the low bidder for these orders had failed samples on fluids from previous years. The total cost differential is $732.10. We also recommending the rejection of the low bidder on diesel fuel as they did not meet bid specifications. The total cost differential for the fuel is $280. Staff therefore is requesting that the council approve and accept the lowest responsible bidders for these materials as presented on the attached exhibit table for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Bid results are on file in the clerk's office and at public works.
Is there a motion? A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson? Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10J, consider approval for the fire rescue department to proceed with the development of the consolidation unauthorized. Please begin to process and make recommendations to the council based on the consolidation of these facilities studied for Commissioner McDowell.
Mr. Mayor, um, in November of 2015, a group from the city, Zion Fire and Rescue, and, um, Beach Park Fire Protection District met along with the Association of Illinois Fire Chiefs to, uh, look at the possibility of consolidating, um, cooperating together. That is, Zion Fire and Rescue and Beach Park Fire Protection District. Um, the results of that meeting was presented to the council and to the Beach Park Fire Protection Board last week, and these are the recommendations, uh, that have come out of that meeting, that if we seek to consolidate, it will improve the response time of secondary calls in the response zones. It will improve the ability to establish effective firefighting force, that is, 15 personnel on scene within eight minutes. It can be a cost savings, sharing equipment, apparatuses, sale of apparatuses, station costs, combined administrative divisions. It can improve shift staffing and reassess, reassigning redundant administrative staff positions. It can improve efficiency and firefighter safety by reducing the number of apparatuses that are staffed by only two personnel. Can improve organizational efficiency by combining job function such as Fire Bureau, uh, Prevention Bureau Training Division, Apparatus Maintenance Divisions, EMS coordinators. And it can easily implement, can easily be implemented through intergovernmental agreements. So those were the benefits of seeking consolidations. There were a few challenges that were identified, that cost sharing could be an, an issue, deciding on joint purchases, shared apparatus and equipment, that there'd have to be discussions on personnel reassignments, that, um, we would have to learn to share facilities and staffing equipment, and of course, we would need the public support to do that. In order to, um, mitigate some of these challenges and to, uh, further seek consolidation, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Chief Lewis to work along with, uh, the Beach Park Fire Protection District Chief in furthering these negotiations.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
So, just one question about the same here. So all of this has already been taken into account for just budget?
No.
He's looking at the concession agreement.
Give a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Again, I want to congratulate the chief and Commissioner McDowell for, uh, being very diligent and, uh, persevering on putting this together. Some of this can be a little dry, but, uh, thank you very much. I think in the end, no matter what happens or how it works out, I think we'd be a, a better city for reviewing the, the fire department and the processes that we go through right now. So we have a motion and is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10K is consider approving budgets for fiscal year May 1, 2016 through April 30 of 2017 for Director Naval, but, uh, we had a workshop prior to this meeting, and we had put it on the agenda in case we were ready to adopt the budget. We're not ready to adopt the budget, so it will most certainly be on the agenda, uh, two weeks from now.
So I'd like to make a motion that we table, um, item K until next meeting.
You have a motion? And a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 11 is departmental cemetery. Do any department heads have anything that you'd like to share with us?
I want to let everyone know that advance disposal began curbside leaf pickup yesterday with Monday's garbage route, and then, uh, they'll be doing it the rest of this week on people's normal garbage day, and then once again next week.
And when do we begin chipping?
The 18th.
The 18th, okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Item 12 is announcements, April 19th at 6:30 PM, the Zion Township Board meeting. April 19th at 7:00 PM is the Zion City Council meeting. May 3rd at 7:00 PM is the Zion City Council meeting. Uh, we, item number 13 is we have need for a closed session pursuant to 15 ILCS 12 slash 2, open meetings for the discussion of collective bargaining. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
A motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Fireson? Mayor Hill?
Aye.